Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on Bill 2025, 2022, oh no, 2220, sorry, as it relates to the Pittsburgh Water for leased property for November 17th, 2025. For the record, we are joined today by council members Warwick and Strasburger. I don't know if we have anyone online, and we may be Councilman Wilson online, and we may be joined by other members throughout the session. May I have the clerk read the title of the bill?
Yes. Bill 2220, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a bill or bills of sale, assignment, and indenture with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, doing business as Pittsburgh Water for leased property pursuant to the July 1995 capital lease agreement for the total amount not to exceed $1.
Thank you. And we've also been joined by Councilman Charland and Chambers. So we have a few guests for today, and I'll turn it over to them in a minute. But what we tried to do was get some outside perspectives on what has happened in other places, how do these kinds of municipal asset transfers occur, and what are the issues involved with them, especially trying to find some people who have experience with them in Pennsylvania. And so we have in chambers with us Robin Lesko from Food and Water Watch, who we appreciate. Thank you for being here. We also have online with us Kofi Osekosay. I'm not sure if I said that correctly, Commissioner, you can correct me when we get to you, who is representing the township of Towahmensin, Pennsylvania, which is in Chester County, who has, where they have been debating some of these issues as well. We haven't yet gotten Ellen Kohler on Zoom, but we're hoping she's able to join us in a little while from the University of Pennsylvania, who has done a study of governance and municipal asset transfers, and has a white paper she'll be telling us about, we hope. And then lastly, we're keeping our fingers crossed that a commissioner from Gainesville, Florida will be joining us, as they also, while not in Pennsylvania, have just taken the radical move to vote to dissolve their water authority and bring the assets and the employees back in-house. And so we're hoping, if it works out within the next hour or so, to hear about where that debate is coming from and how it's going. So with that, I'll turn it over first to Ms. Lesko. Again, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me. Once again, my name is Robin Lesko. I'm the Western Pennsylvania Organizing Manager for Food and Water Watch and Food and Water Action. Though we are based out of DC, I am born and raised in Pittsburgh, so I'm very glad to be here. I just want to let you know, Food and Water Watch is a 501(c)(3), so we champion healthy food and clean water for all. We stand up to corporations that put profits before people and advocate for a democracy that improves people's lives and protects our environment. All righty. Are we working with those slides today? Or everybody has their copy?
I'm just gonna text my office back there and see if they can help us with that. Appreciate it. We've got a paper copy for the record. We have a paper copy in front of us. We'll see if we can get the slides up on the Zoom as well.
No, no problem at all.
You can continue, and then we'll just kind of catch up.
Absolutely. Yeah, no problem. So I just want to let you know, so right now nationally, 87% of people who are on a water system receive their service from a publicly owned system. You know, usually they're local governments, so that translates to about nine out of 10 people, you know, get, receive their water service from a publicly owned utility. Right now, there are regional differences, though, and you might see on your printout, and then when we get the slides up, we do have a little graph here nationally. And Pennsylvania is actually one of the states with the most water privatization. 31% of Pennsylvanians have privately owned water service. And the big corporate water players are actually really aggressive right now, to just come out and say it. Many mergers have been leaving a few big water corporations. The last two include Veolia and American Water. And we'll get to that a little bit later. But the types of privatization, you can think of it as kind of a scale for how much control is transferred away from the local government to the for-profit entity. So it can be anywhere from fully owned and operated by the local government, which is your blue end spectrum of full public control, to systems can be fully owned and operated by a large corporation, which is full private control or a sale. And in the middle, somewhere in our, in our area, systems can be managed by a local government or authority but contracted out to a large corporation. Various forms of the public-private partnership contracts do exist. For some, for us Pittsburghers, like the delegated management contract that Pittsburgh had with Veolia about a decade ago or so, but I won't go too much into that. So what are, you know, what can be at risk for any type of privatization? The heart of the issue is about who controls the system, you know, who makes the big decisions about where to extend the lines, what investments to prioritize and where. I'm on the slide with the girl holding the glass of water. I know, I'm acting like an auctioneer right now, but I promise. There's no problem. You're allowed to, you're allowed to look on each other's papers for this one. Like we were saying, you know, what investments to prioritize and where, you know, who gets their lead pipes replaced for, how do we charge for service? What's really key is to retain these decisions-making over programs and investments, you know, for public health and environmental benefits. So once again, talking about accountability and transparency in those decisions. With the public control, you have access to meetings where the decisions are being made and direct communication with the decision-makers. You know, us Pittsburghers, we like to talk a lot with our local elected officials. It's a good give and take. You know, you can email the mayor or city council, but with private control, the public is cut out, and then we start feeling the, kind of the pull there of maybe a potential lack of transparency and ballot box accountability. Moving right along, so a key harm of private ownership is higher water rates and less affordable service. And in times like these, you know, every penny counts. Under private ownership, a corporation makes more profit through rate hikes. And then on average, among these large systems, private water utilities charge an average of 59% more than local governments for the same amount of water. Local public control is the most affordable option and most transparent. Switching over, so I'm on slide Key Private Operation Risk. A key harm of private operation of publicly owned systems is poor service because of job loss and corner cutting. In a privatization contract, a corporation makes more profit by cutting costs through corner cutting and downsizing, and this can lead to worse water service and job loss. We're looking at one in three lost jobs are lost on an average whenever it goes to a privatization or a sale. And then we also encounter problems such as a lack of expertise and experience. You know, water systems have a very high asset specificity, so the more expertise and hands-on experience we have, the better because of the intricacies and also Pittsburgh's history and water history. And then with that, there's also fewer hands on deck, you know, slower responses to customer service requests and maintenance backlogs, you know, we, you know, we always fight about potholes. We also want to make sure we don't have that kind of backlog with our, with our water as well. Not that I'm throwing any shade to potholes, you guys are very quick to that as a lifelong Pittsburgher, so no shade is being thrown at all right now. If I may, there are some recommendations that we can make to city council that can help out to protect the city's decision-making powers. We want to look at language that prohibits all form of privatization in that contract language, you know, and explore, and so to protect our decision-making powers. And, you know, you can clarify these terms within the contract, you know, just making sure to be as specific as possible. Ensuring that the owner transfer will not limit your ability to allow the utility to conduct full-service line replacement or regulate stormwater. You know, much of stormwater management requires land use planning and ordinances, to be specific. You also want to look at prohibiting all forms of private, you know, we talked about the contract language already. While the charter does protect against a transfer of ownership, we want to just ensure that the protections are in place for all forms of contracting out, just really crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. And then also looking at exploring options to have elected board members to approve accountability, so exploring options to ensure ballot box accountability over the utility, or if city loses power, to legislate utility water policies by ordinance. It is critical to ensure that the officials making those decisions are accountable to the people of Pittsburgh. This could require board members to hold elected office covering the city, or just, it could be re-establishing PWSA as a water district with an electric board, elected board, excuse me. And finally, if, if I may, there are some best practices prior to changing government's structure. In general, a change of governance or ownership should not be done without a thorough study of the impacts on the city and the people of the city. This due diligence is necessary to prevent unintended harms, and the process should be open and transparent. Everybody gets happy because they know exactly what's going on, because right now, the public hasn't seen the contract yet, you know, how can they weigh in without full transparency and knowing exactly what's going on? At a minimum, adequate due diligence could, would merit the following: a comprehensive rate analysis under each alternative governance scenario, a fiscal impact analyses for the city, PWSA, and the stormwater system, racial equality impact assessments, absolutely, economic equity impact assessments, environmental impact and environmental justice analyses, legal analyses, including an assessment of legal consequences for local ratepayer and labor protections established by local jurisdictions, for the existing federal consent decrees, and for any outstanding lawsuits. And finally, a more robust and meaningful stakeholder and public input process really would kind of solidify the deal and be kind of the gold standard of best practices while we kind of navigate this changing structure. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to be here and here for any questions, comments, or complaints.
Thank you, Ms. Lesko. That was a lot. I feel like I'm still like catching up, taking notes. I'm gonna probably come back to that last slide of suggestions, because I feel like there was a lot of kind of sub-bullet points that I missed that weren't there.
Absolutely. I wanted to make sure I gave time for our other presenters in the conversation. I did not want to bogart all the time.
Definitely, definitely. And speaking of which, I think I will move on, just to keep us moving, and I see one of our speakers is queued up, and I can't tell online myself if we have yet to be joined by Ellen Kohler or Mr. Eastman, but Commissioner, I'm gonna say it, Osekosay? Are you there? Is that you? I'm looking over away from the camera awkwardly towards the, where I can see you on Zoom. Oh, we can't hear you. Is someone unmuting, Mr. Commissioner? I'm gonna work, see if our clerk's office can figure that out for us. Commissioner, we've got you on camera, but we're not hearing anything from your side. Are you still there? Does anyone else hear him elsewhere that isn't Chambers? We're talking to our, our technical people who are over in the corner. I can fill time while we wait for other speakers if I suddenly heard something. We heard a little bit. Try again.
Does the microphone work now?
Yes. There you go.
Awesome.
Yes, you sound great.
Fantastic. Yes, my name is Kofi Ose. I'm township supervisor in Towahmensin, which is in Montgomery County on, in the southeast part of Pennsylvania. Yeah, I am very thankful to be invited to this, and also wanted to say congratulations on, on passing your Home Rule Charter amendment. I'm very happy to see that news. So the, the way Towahmensin stopped our proposed sale was through a Home Rule Charter process. We actually didn't have one until the prior board voted to sell our sewer system, and I was not on the board at the time. So what I, I did with my neighbors is we organized a petition to start a government study commission to draft a new charter. And in that charter, it had language to ban the privatization of water, wastewater and stormwater utilities. And we also left some flexibility to have short-term leases instead of completely blocking that off. And it's one of those things, I think, the, the big concern from my neighbors is when these utilities are privatized, the rates tend to double or triple. At first, we were gonna sell to Next Air Energy, who does not have any water or wastewater utilities. And then kind of during the process of passing our charter, they backed out, and then the board decided to sell to Pennsylvania American Water. And when I finally got elected two years ago, American Water backed out after the charter was in place, that they said they didn't have any way to close on the deal. So that's kind of where we're at. I think one of the, the big things as far as actually keeping the system is still making sure it's maintained. I think having those longer-term capital plans is very important. Keeping your censory involved is very important, and having like some candid discussions on how much it costs to maintain water, wastewater utilities. Our sewer authority and our water authority are separate, but one of the things I appreciated about our water authority, which is actually a joint authority with 10 other municipalities, is that they are very active in having community events. I have one of our water authorities, Water Bottles, with me. They very much want to make sure that people know who they are, because when you think of this type of infrastructure, people can complain about potholes, but not too many people know what's underground. So just making sure we're, we're out there and saying how important water is. So if, in the, I guess unfortunate event that we had to raise the rates, we can justify that. And I think being open about that and talking with our neighbors is, is key to that. Other than that, I think the authority model is good. I know some places have had issues with it, so as long as the contract language is in a good spot, I did like some of the previous speaker's suggestions around possibly having elected officials on the board could be good. But as, as long as you're, have, you know, good people on that board and they're making decisions as well, I think that, that's a good path forward. Yeah, I'm also happy to answer any questions, and yeah, I'm really, really glad to be here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just to fill up a little more time, because we're waiting for our third speaker, who is the professor from the University of Pennsylvania, who again has an entire white paper about municipal asset transfers that I think is really important, want it to be easier for council members to probably be briefed on the white paper in this post-agenda than to, to be reading it ourselves. Is, can you tell me maybe a little bit more about in Towahmensin, that kind of what precipitated your township supervisors to vote to sell the sewer system, I think is what happened? Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah. So the sewer system itself, I think, is actually in really good shape. We didn't have any consent decrees at the time, and we've been keeping up on maintenance, but it seemed like they really wanted to use the money from a sale for other township projects like roads or parks. And especially, they wanted to do it without raising property taxes. And this is probably the fortunate thing, as an elected official in Towahmensin, people are starting to say like, please raise my property taxes, because I'd rather you do that than, you know, sell the sewer system. And, you know, we, we just voted to advertise our budget this, this past week. We do have a 7% property tax increase in that proposed budget, but I haven't gotten any complaints yet, so it does seem like people prefer the, you know, 5%, 10% property tax increases over the, what would be 100% or 200% sewer rate increase.
Thank you. I am getting some notes about our other speakers. So what I'm gonna propose, even though it's a little bit atypical for what we do for a post-agenda, I'm gonna allow council members to maybe ask some questions from our first two speakers, and, and then hopefully, we're gonna, we have one, if not the other, jump in. So we'll just be taking it kind of split in half, half and half, and we'll, we'll get back to our speakers as they join us. So does, again, we've been joined by Councilman Charland and Councilman Coghill and Councilman Mosley. So I'm gonna go kind of down the line and start with Councilwoman Warwick, who I also maybe didn't acknowledge, so. But again, we have had two of these four speakers, but if you have any questions about what you've heard so far.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I don't have too many questions. I am glad that we did the referendum and, you know, this presentation all, all makes I do, I mean, I have some questions just about our, the, the terms of the contract, right, about the sale. Of course, I know that we are gonna talk about that at the table when PWSA comes to the table. This isn't really, well, I, I don't know if this is something that your group has thought about in terms of our specific situation. I know that, and I've spoken with leadership at PWSA about this as well, I have concern in the city of Pittsburgh about a number of sewer lines that are quote "private" because they were built, they were not built by the city, you know, whenever, like 100 years ago. And so that, you know, we have, we have property owners who maybe have a private line but don't know they have a private line, and that, you know, because those lines are not maintained by Pittsburgh Water, that we can have incidences of, of major problems, right, like big street collapses. And then, and then property owners are responsible for, for those repairs, which can obviously be devastating to a homeowner. You know, that's something that I would like to see remedied in this contract of, and again, I don't know exactly how it would work, but just sort of like the city acknowledging that if it's under our streets, it should be our infrastructure, right? We own it whether or not, you know, whether or not we owned it 100 years ago, we, we should acknowledge that we are responsible for it today, and that then those assets should be part of what, what are transferred over as, you know, as for Peta, for Pittsburgh Water. I don't, I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, but that's my, that's my primary concern in this whole conversation about, about this asset transfer.
I mean, my knee-jerk reaction to that, we didn't go into hyper specifics or anything like that with particular, we kind of did an overarching and then local, but it truly, most of my, I can jump to that and say like, most of my expertise is like oil and gas, which is, you know, a cousin, but not here too. It's just like if something was privately owned, but now it's coming over by the state or anything like that, now I would think that way about the city. It's just like, it's, it's all encompassing. It's just especially if a resident doesn't know what, they don't know what they don't know. And so to take that over and to do the assessments, because it's just, it would be bad enough to affect one property, you know, one property owner's property, but the fact now that it could take out like whole city blocks or anything like that, it's just something that we have to consider and just have general oversight. And it's, it is, and you know, we talked, we had a lot of bullet points here about best practices, but you know, it's just, you know, the whole looking out for your neighbor, looking out for each other, you know, taking over and making sure that we look over everyone.
I think it's interesting that the case of the sale, did I hear that right, that the sale of the water system, what was the sale price for Mr. Ose on your, in your municipality?
We, it was proposed at $104 million.
Interesting.
For our sewer system.
Got it. And that was sold to a private, that was privatized?
It was canceled.
Oh, it was canceled? Got it, because the citizens didn't support it. I understand, I understand. Okay. Yeah, it's just, I mean, it is, that's sort of a question, I don't, I don't really have, and I mean, obviously, the initial thought is why is ours worth a dollar and another's worth 100 million? But at any rate, that's sort of, I'll, I'll, I'll hold on to that. I'll marinate over that question leading up to Wednesday, I guess. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I apologize for just coming. I don't have any questions. I'm gonna take in some of the information, and I'll defer to, to one of my colleagues, and you can circle back to me, I'll have some questions. Thank you for being here, and thank you for, for calling us.
And just FYI, we do, I'm getting notes, we are, our other speakers are going to be joining us if we wait long and if we, you know, go out of sequence here, we should be just the right amount of time. Appreciate it. Go ahead. Thanks, sorry, Councilman, what's your name? Coghill, sorry.
How quickly she forgets, you know? Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm sorry I missed your introduction as well. What is your name?
Oh, I'm Robin Lesko.
Robin, okay.
Yep.
And Robin, you are not with PWSA, you are with Food and Water Watch?
Yes.
Okay, so you're like an advocacy group?
Yes, environmental advocacy group.
That's right. You work Pennsylvania, all over the place?
I personally am in Western Pennsylvania. My organization is based out of DC, but I'm born and raised in the Pittsburgh area.
Okay, great, great, great. So I just have a quick, simple questions. Many years ago, eight years ago, when I first took office, there was a very aggressive play by one of our water companies to purchase PWSA. And they came to me and some others, they know I come from the private sector, I guess they felt, oh, we can get to this guy. And they did, actually. And Councilwoman Gross talked me out of it, but, but no, but no, they were very aggressively going after and trying to make a bid for PWSA. And I heard you advocate, you know, for, you know, public system versus private, and I just heard a couple of things that I would just want to be clear. You said that, in one of your statements, you said that if it were to be private, there would be a third less jobs. Is that right?
The data does show nationally that like whenever we go from a public to a privatization, that it does increase job loss just because of trying to increase profit margins and things like that. I, I don't know that by a case-by-case basis, but like nationally, data has shown that.
Got it, got it. Because, you know, I went in-depth talks with them, but they never mentioned, you know, it would be job loss, but I imagine maybe just because they cut jobs maybe, who knows, that they don't feel necessary. Now, and they also said that at the time, PWSA, we were losing like 50% of our water, you know, underground and transporting it. And they claimed that they would, you know, tighten that up where they would only lose 0% or 10%. I don't know how, if you have any insight on that or not, does private companies and public companies, do, do public companies lose more water underground than private companies because of infrastructure, or any data or facts on that?
I don't have the data on that as much, but I can say that when it is public water system, that you can hold their feet to the fire, lovingly hold their feet to the fire a lot more, because the public will have transparency and more open communication. And just, you know, on a personal level, I'm just, I'm like, unless there's some hard data in front of me, promises of more efficiency don't translate into reality always.
Right, right.
But I will always trade a higher track, I will trade more public transparency and involvement over even maybe a track record of more efficiency, just because there are more people knowing.
exactly what's happening each time and there's just more people power with that.
I love the idea of elected officials. I believe we have at least one of our council members, is it you, Councilwoman Strasburg? Or is on the PWSA board? Oddly enough, Robyn, um, my part and other small parts, I think Councilwoman Warwick also, we are under private water. We have a private company, the only part of the city of Pittsburgh. My entire district is under privatization. It's Pennsylvania American Water. When I took office, they were much more expensive than PWSA. I, um, there was a subsidy that the city of Pittsburgh was paying residents from my district just so we would pay the same rate. So, you know, oddly enough, uh, after some restructuring of two, two or three years down the road, turns out PWSA became more expensive than the private company.
Interesting, yeah.
And, you know, I know you commented that, you know, that typically, I guess, public system's much less expensive because you have elected officials and we're always looking out for constituents in private. But in this case, I think they're around the same actually right now. I would venture to say Penn American will probably outgain them, but aren't they all regulated by the PUC anyway? Aren't their prices kind of regulated by that? Is it just a matter of we won't go there as often looking for a rate? And maybe these questions should be for Will Pickren, I don't know, you know, so.
No, absolutely. I will always defer to people who, you know, I hear these questions more often than me.
Are we going to be bringing PWSA to the table as well?
I expected that we'd have that discussion when we discuss the bill directly on Wednesday.
Oh, okay, 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 that's good. Then I, I was going to save questions, but that's, that's fine. We're, yeah. Okay, so, uh, so yeah, I mean, so, so as you said, you know, um, private's more expensive than, you know, public, but, you know, in this case, it was very much so. We were subsidized. The city was going to take our subsidy away and I screamed, kicked and cried. And, um, you know, it turned out it didn't matter because they all went for a new rate change anyway and end up being equal. Or we're actually a little bit less, I think, but, um.
There are always outliers and I appreciate you fighting for your constituents.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And although PWSA is in charge of our sewers.
Right.
You know, which I don't think, I talked to a private company, they didn't want anything to do with it. But PWSA probably doesn't want anything to do with them either, I don't know. They're probably more expensive, I would think, than just the, I, I don't know, to be honest with you. But any insight on that or is that something I should say?
No, I, I will leave that up to people there with the intricacies. I just, I know overarching data and.
Okay, um, that's it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coghill. I think we're, we have been joined by our speaker, Commissioner Houston from Eastman, from Gainesville. But I'm not sure that we have been joined by Ms. Lesko from the University of Pennsylvania Water Center. So council members, would you prefer to hold your questions for the speakers? Or would you prefer to ask questions now as we move down the row?
I, I would prefer that the speakers.
Okay, so we'll take Mr. Eastman and then hopefully we'll get to Ms. Kohler as well. So Commissioner, am I, am I addressing you correctly? Is it Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner, that's what we call ourselves in Gainesville.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. I really appreciate you making time out of your day. Um, and I think you're also Mayor Pro Tem of Gainesville, is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you, thank you. It's really nice of you to be here. As you can see, we're having a kind of like non-voting discussion on what is kind of the context from other places about transfers of ownership. And we similarly have a water authority that has a lease signed in 1995 that says we are to sell our entire system to them for $1. And I was struck by the recent votes in Gainesville about how you all decided to dissolve your water authority. And I know that that's still kind of in play, but I was hoping that you could give us maybe just a five-minute context about how the citizens in Gainesville decided to also, I think, move forward with a, with an initiative to, to pass that as a referendum.
Yeah, absolutely. And by large margins, we just had our second vote on the issue, which passed by 75% about two weeks ago. So 75% of our, our voters wanted to dissolve that authority. And just to give you all a little bit of context, um, here in the city of Gainesville, we, since about 1905, but even before that for our water system, we have had an electric utility that was overseen by the city, a water utility. We've expanded that into telecommunications. So we have a, have internet, high-speed internet that we do for commercial businesses that come out of that, natural gas as well. And so we, we oversee a lot of, there, there's very few utilities that oversee quite as much as the city of Gainesville does. We're a city of about 150,000 people, so much, much smaller than the city of Pittsburgh. So it's kind, it's a real honor to be here to talk to you guys about what we're doing here in our little town. But our, our water system was really central. If you know anything about Gainesville, the one thing, well, if you know two things about Gainesville, it's one, it was where Tom Petty and the Heartbreakers grew up. And the second thing is that we're the home of the Florida Gators, University of Florida. We got the University of Florida, so we were able to work with them on our water system back in late 1890s to say that we're going to be providing them water. That was a big deal for them at that particular time. And so we had a long-term contract with them through the 1970s to provide that water for them at no cost. And since then, it's just been a real central part. A lot of the parks that we have in the city of Gainesville are, there are sometimes there, there, uh, probably our newest park is a, is a sewage place that would clean water before it goes out into wetland areas. Then we were able to co-build with that utility that would then, um, that could work both as a, uh, as a, uh, as a wetland as well as, you know, a place to clean our waterways. Many of our natural areas and greenways, we're very, very immersed in our water system. Many of our parks, many of our trails, many of those. Fast forward, and this has also been a big political football going back over the years. I go back through, you know, even when we started the system back in the early 1900s, we're going through the 1960s, 1970s. A lot of discussion as to, um, how should we govern this? Should it be more focused on environmentalism? Should it be more focused on keeping rates low? The same questions that we have in many parts of our city, right? How do you, how do you balance out affordability with making sure that you have long-term infrastructure? With making sure that you're doing right by the community? It's also been a big, um, it, it had been, come a much more partisan issue over the years as many things in modern America are, they get to be more partisan. Um, and so in 2023, the legislature passed a bill that would strip the city of its utility and gave that appointment authority to the governor. So it was still a, an office, a department of the city. Everyone within our water, our electric, our natural gas, our telecommunications, we're still city employees. We still had the insurance on everything within there, but, uh, but the governance would be under the governor. We've not, I, to this day, have not found anything quite like it. It was a big, um, a very controversial decision. We still had control of our own charter and so we put it on the charter back in 2024 for an official vote on that November election. And that passed with 73% of the vote to dissolve that newly created Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority. A judge ruled that they didn't like the language of that and so that got tossed out. We're appealing that, um, but then as we were appealing it, we also put new language on the ballot that said that we would be dissolving, the same question, would you like to dissolve the governor-appointed Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority? That passed by even larger margins, 75%. Not that much larger of margins, but for those of you who are elected officials, you know, 75% is a huge margin to win by. It's hard to get much bigger than that. So we, um, we, uh, so our, our constituents are, are very fired up about this, fired up about the idea of having infrastructure that works for us, fired up about making sure that, that we have a water system that has clean drinking water, um, and, uh, and, and making sure that that is under their direct control. As, as an elected official, of course, it's a lot more responsibility for us. It's a lot more things that we have to decide. But, uh, you know, what, what had been working beforehand and we would like to get back to is that those efficiencies that you get when you have all utilities running underneath the same streak that your public works department is working on. They are not going through, you know, these multiple permitting process, multiple media, HR departments, you know, streamlining this that can save both ratepayers and taxpayers money in the long term. You know, as well as just that direct accountability to the taxpayers and to the ratepayers of the community. And so, um, right now we are back on appeal that had been stayed by a larger court as we were waiting for the answer to that appeal. So we are, we, this is not a success story as of now, but it is, uh, it is something we're currently working on and that our community is, is certainly invested in and excited to, to move through. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you guys have about it.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was really helpful. And I still don't see our fourth speaker again. Oh, she's joined the meeting. I've literally gotten an email just this second. And so I'm not sure if she's able to get in or who can help. She received a message that she's on mute, if that means anything to the, the clerk's office. Could you let our last speaker into the panel? Maybe she's only by phone. So if anyone back there in the clerk's office can find her. I can't really see that far where the little names are next, listed next to, um, our speakers. So, um, Ms. Kohler, can you hear us? Is anyone from the clerk's office, um, helping Ms. Kohler and us get into the meeting? Can't see them, can't see them. Okay. So we'll return. I'll just go back to members. Um, I apologize. So it was really hard to find a time slot where we could get all of our speakers here during budget season. It was kind of hit or miss. We were trying to get people to join us on a very, very short window. Did, do you see someone join, Ms. Councilman?
I think it needs to be promoted from an attendee to a panelist.
Somebody in the clerk's office who has control of the Zoom meeting, could you, um, promote Ms. Kohler to a panelist? That would be helpful if anybody's listening. I don't think our, I think people can do that unfortunately. I think it might have to be someone from the clerk's office. Oh, so maybe not. Okay. There's a phone number, is the phone number? Mrs. Kohler, is that you? Can you, can you, we can't hear you yet. We're just waiting. We see some clicking happening for those of you watching us from home.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're here.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I'm so sorry that I'm only able to speak by phone and that this has been a little bit of a hassle.
We're doing pretty well on time. We are approaching an hour. But, um, Ms. Kohler, we, you know, each of our speakers has just gone and given us a kind of a brief overview of kind of what they have experienced with. And I have advertised you as someone who has been doing a study on the transfer of municipal assets. And, um, I know that we don't have you on screen and we don't have you on a slideshow, but we can make sure that all members get an email with your white paper attached? I don't think we've shared it before. Are you able to kind of give us a, a high-level overview?
Sure, sure. I'm happy to do that. So, um, good afternoon. My name's Ellen Kohler. I'm the Director of Applied Research and Program at the Water Center at Penn. We are an applied research center that works with communities on the issues facing their drinking water, wastewater and stormwater challenges and the challenges those systems, um, they have in interacting with their water ships as well. We are, uh, and as has been noted, we just recently published a white paper uh, looking at restructuring. And part of the impetus for this paper is that we're part of a team that is delivering water technical assistance across EPA Region 3 with funding from EPA. The overall work is led by the University of Maryland's Environmental Finance Center. And we are the lead for that work in Pennsylvania and Delaware. So we have been working for the last two and a half years with communities across Pennsylvania and helping them access federal funding, state funding for their water systems, so drinking water, wastewater, stormwater. And in the context of that work, we've had several communities, you know, experience challenges such that they think that they're only, they're, the level of challenges that they're facing are, you know, one, multiple kinds of challenges at a larger scale. So compounding challenges in a way that they have not experienced in the past, right? Around aging infrastructure, climate change, um, lead service line, PFOs, you know, treatment needs, all these kinds of issues that they've been facing. And at a scale that they just haven't seen. And so they, they're feeling like my choices are to try to continue to do things the way I've been doing and, and, um, seeing increasing costs or to privatize. And we wanted to make sure we shared with communities that there is a wide range of options before them, that they are not limited to those two options. That partnering and collaboration is absolutely a path forward for a lot of our communities. I have to be completely honest, I'm not entirely familiar with the, the overall history here, but my understanding is that this is not an issue where we're talking about privatization. I understand there may be concerns about privatization, but it's also my understanding there's been a referendum already passed that assets will not be privatized. So I guess I'm not entirely sure what else I can address for you that could be helpful in your conversation today.
Thank you. Um, again, we have, we'll make available to council members so that at least they know that they know that you are there and that we'll make sure that they get the white paper. So even though we're kind of trying to cram in a bunch of concepts into a post-agenda here, and again, it's awkward because of a budget season, um, at least now that we've made introductions. So if you're able to answer, if council members have questions that they're able to articulate today, you're there. And if it takes some while to process and think about what the questions may be, at least now that we've made that connection.
Yep.
So I appreciate that. I'm going to, we've, we've gone down the table with some questions and answers to our first two speakers. So I'm just going to pick up where I left off. And then we'll see if any members have any additional questions. So I'm going to turn now to Councilman Sharland. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate all the guests being here today. I know that putting together something like this is really cha, like logistically challenging to figure out different people in different areas. But it is nice that we're able to do this largely, you know, without having to fly people in. It's nice that that's, that's the world we're in now. I, I do want to ask kind of the question, and, and maybe this is a better question for you, Madam Chair, or anyone else who's here. Is there something related to the issue at hand with the asset transfer? Is there something that I'm not getting? Because to me, it seems like this is, we're transferring, you know, the pipes, the infrastructure in the ground to PWSA. The folks that work on the pipes and, you know, the, the sewers underground. What, what, what else is going on that I'm, I'm not understanding?
So in 1995, and I'll make sure council members have this stuff. It actually takes a little digging to get, right? That there's a capital lease that's signed, um, when the city is nearly bankrupt. It's like, we're going to create this authority and now we're going to like move all operations and maintenance over to this authority. And then the signatures all say, you know, 30 years from now, like a long, long time in the future, you know, PWSA can buy the whole system for a dollar. So it's true that this isn't a sale to a private corporation, but it is still removing it from direct oversight of this body, right? Right now, because we haven't actually voted on the agenda item that's on our table, we are the landlords. After we do that, if, if we approve the bill that's in front of us and there is a sale of what's generally thought of as like a $2 billion, $2 billion asset, right? 1,000 miles of water line, 1,500 miles of sewer line, the Highland Park Reservoirs, the Landford Reservoirs, I'm not sure if I've forgotten there, if there are other, the water towers and then also the water plant in Aspen Wall, right? We won't be the landlords. Um, and PWSA will own it completely. So the loss of oversight, kind of transparency and control, I think, is the fear. That there, when you're the landlord for a system and you have, you know, you're operating and maintain kind of lease with a lessee, that you have more control. And I experienced that directly when I was on the board where PWSA had then like sublet the system operation and maintenance to Veolia. And that went really badly. It wasn't the PWSA board who firstly called them out. It was council members who called them out. And so it kind of was a, a, um, a combined effort, I would say. And so having, you know, been a seat in both places, like it's, you know, I was trying to get the attention of council, of board members and they weren't paying attention, but council members did. So that was then, and it feels like there's, there's definitely, you know, when you own the asset, you have more control. And so the people have more control because they have direct representatives, et cetera. And that's what I think we were hearing our speaker saying. So we haven't engaged in this conversation now. So we haven't engaged in this conversation now for seven years or so, since we had the kind of conversation about a hostile takeover attempt back in 2018 or so. And so, there are new board, there are new council members, certainly there's new city residents, and I think we're in a new place in the conversation, so. It is up to us to decide whether, as you say, is there something we're missing, I think is the question.
So, I, like many members, I actually think we probably have a majority of members that also have some footprint of privatized water in their district, I think that's right? I, I know from, at least four of us have Penn American. Does Penn American own the asset in our districts?
Well, Veolia has merged with them now, I think we heard from Slasko, which I didn't know, I don't know that much about.
Just, just in terms of, like, you know, in the metaphor of us being the landlord, are they, are they owner occupied? Do they, do they own their property? I, I actually don't know. Anyone else?
Does Penn American own the sewer system?
Correct.
No, PWSA owns the sewers.
So, okay, so, okay, all right, so, the asset itself is still owned by PWSA, or Penn Amer, yeah, or Pittsburgh Water, I'm sorry, I, I will, I will probably never fix that, I will try really hard. Okay, I'm just curious, I, I didn't know that. Yeah, okay, I, I think that's really all the questions I have, I'm just kind of, I should, if there's something more that I'm, I'm missing here, thank you.
Councilwoman Kukul.
No, I was just to follow up on that, I just wanted to know, so Penn American owns the water, infrastructure, water lines? PWSA owns, or the city, I should say, owns the sewer system, okay, that, just one.
In your district.
Right, you're in my district, thanks.
In your district. Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you, Madam Chair, welcome, thank you for being here today, thanks for everyone joining us online. I have to think back to when I first started on council 10 years ago as a staffer, and our outgoing council district representative for District 5, Doug Shields, joined Food and Water Watch as an organizer. So, you had some good, some good institutional history memory with him coming on and then, I think, retiring eventually. I, so, I'm, I'm happy to have this conversation today, I am, I, I want to make sure I'm understanding how we're talking about all these entities, that I'm understanding correctly. Are you, or is anyone here saying that Pittsburgh Water currently is a private entity in any way? Or are we calling that public?
I think we were saying in certain districts, there is some still water privatization, where the rest is public or.
Sorry, when I say Pittsburgh Water, I mean the rebranded version of PWSA, the new name is called Pittsburgh Water. So is PWSA now, now called Pittsburgh Water, is that, are we talking about that as a private entity, or are we talking about that as a public entity? I, I would call it a public entity because I think when we were talking about the fear of a Veolia takeover 2.0, or a People's Natural Gas takeover in 2018, or even when we're talking about our parking assets back before I was on council, and there was the big fear that, and a big debate among council members, I understand, I was not there at the time, that, you know, this debate, we, we had no money, there was a contingent on council that wanted to sell our assets like Chicago did, and we, or leasing it or privatizing our parking assets, and we chose not to, and we have a parking authority that we call public, I would say that Pittsburgh Water remains our, our public entity. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're still calling Pittsburgh Water public in the way that we refer to a lot of our other things as public. I, I do want to correct one thing, it was asserted that Pittsburgh Water will be purchasing our assets for a dollar if this asset transfer goes through. Pittsburgh Water paid $101 million for the lease in 20, in 1995, and is still paying down that debt. So, in today's dollars, I don't even know what that is, but the money has been spent, it has been refinanced, the dollar is just, is just to allow for the actual asset transfer to occur. Wanted to clarify that. I, I guess I have a similar question, maybe a different version of question, the question that Councilperson Sharland asked, which is, what is our end goal here? If our, if, if we've agreed that Pittsburgh Water is a public entity, and that we want to guard against a future privatization effort, fortunately, the majority of voters in the city just agreed to pass a referendum to keep our water public in perpetuity, and it's my understanding that the lease, the asset, the asset transfer agreement includes specific language both from, that was agreed on by the city and Pittsburgh Water leadership to forever keep it public. And we will continue to maintain, no matter what, the ability of the mayor to appoint council, to appoint board members to Pittsburgh Water's board, and maintain council approval over those board members. So nothing would stop council from being engaged in the future, should there be the risk of any kind of privatization. I mean, are we talking about dissolving and restarting and acquire, reacquiring Pittsburgh Water at the city level, in which case we would take on $1 billion of debt? Right now, I certainly, in the position we are in our budget process, would, I envy Pittsburgh Water's budget currently and their ability to borrow and get money from Penn Vest and be able to make the, the longstanding upgrades that are needed. I am very concerned about privatization, in fact, it was just six years ago that I held my own post-agenda on privatization. It was, it was, it was a wonderful learning on the heels of the work that Councilwoman Gross did as a member, a former member of Pittsburgh Water, then PWSA, to keep it public. And I continue to be very concerned about the steady marching ahead of state laws, or state bills, that would target our most vulnerable water authorities and water systems, saying that if you meet some threshold of, you know, financial debt or financial insecurity, then you must be, you know, you must be acquired by a private entity. That's what I'm very concerned about. Like I said, I, I envy Pittsburgh Water's financial status, and wish our city had the same status, and the same budget, and the same ability to borrow and spend, and I don't think that Pittsburgh Water is who we need to be concerned about, I worry much, much more about Wilkinsburg-Penn Joint Authority and some of the smaller authorities bordering us and out there in the rural areas, that's whom I'm very worried, it would be taken over systematically by the Veolias and the Penn Americans of the world. So, I guess my question, it can be rhetorical, we can continue this conversation certainly on Wednesday, but my question, if, if anyone has an answer, is, what is, what is the end goal here, what are we looking to do? Thank you.
Thank you, any other members? For the President, Councilwoman Mosley?
Thank you. I was just looking over the slide deck that you, you shared, and I was, and I think like most of the members, you know, trying to, you know, wrap our heads, you know, around a really complex, you know, issue, in, in your mind, Robin, you know, based on your expertise, you know, how to, where do you see, you know, just say hypothetically, that, you know, this, this transfer, you know, goes through, and, you know, and, and Pittsburgh Water, you know, has ownership of the infrastructure, some of that Penn America owns infrastructure south of the Monongahela River. In that case, how would you differentiate, you know, the existence of those two entities, hypothetically, you know, in, in the future, a Pittsburgh Water infrastructure in most parts of the city, that's under Pittsburgh Water jurisdiction and the water lines are owned versus, you know, what, like, what would be the difference between, you know, what's happening south of the Monongahela River versus what's happening in, in other parts of the city with a, with a Pittsburgh Water-owned infrastructure versus the Penn America-owned infrastructure, just for me to wrap my head around, based on your expertise and, you know, what you shared in the slide deck?
You know, I, I want, I think I want to come out and say, this isn't like an attack out, like a PWSA or anything like that, this is more of like an exploratory, like, like, what are concerns of privatization, like, like, a lot of this is like hypotheticals and what has happened across the country, and I just, how would I look like, how would, can you go back to like the final piece of that, like, it's like, how would we look at the difference of like, what, something would be privately owned versus publicly, like?
Yeah, I guess, so like, you know, yeah, because I guess, you know, we could say that the, the Penn America infrastructure south of the Monongahela River is, is privately owned and operated by Penn, by Penn American, which I assume is a private corporation, versus Pittsburgh Water owned and operated, you know, which is obviously a public authority of this, under the, the authority law of Pennsylvania, do, do you, you know, do, do you differentiate, you know, those two entities, you know, hypothetically, you know, would you see those as any different, maybe that's a better way to ask the question, or would you see them as basically kind of being a similar?
I think they would be similar, you know, but there's always just going to be like minute details, and it's just in, you know, and where is their public control and public insight and things like that, you know, because a lot of times, like, we do see like privatization of water, like, there is like improved technology or layout or anything, you know, and it's wonderful that, like, it's like if you put your trust in a private entity, that like they deliver, whereas, you know, public and, you know, do they have more funds, would there be better technology, maybe yes, maybe no, but like, at least the public and the people who represent the public know exactly what's going on and know exactly how people feel. So I know that's a roundabout way of saying, it's just, they could look very similar or very different, it's just a matter of like, will the public fully know what's going on and have input on that?
Mm-hmm, and based on the slide, there are not numbers, I don't know exactly which page this is, but it's the, it's kind of like this continuum of, you know, fully public to fully private, like, in, in your mind, you know, if we would approve this transfer, you know, where on your slide, where, where would you see it following in, in the continuum of full public control to full private control?
If we had the sale?
Yeah, yeah, if the, if the transfer, if the transfer goes through and Pittsburgh Water takes ownership over the water lines.
If we're looking at it, you know, we started like going into kind of like the, just like the deeper orange, I wouldn't say like a full control, because like it is saying within the, the proposed legislation that there would still be insight and, and members on these boards and decision-making, so we can't say we're fully in the red, but like, we are approaching that, and I am, you know, not here to criticize, but to just say like these are like the hypotheticals and what has happened in different scenarios.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate, and, and I think, I think this is my final question, I wanted to, you know, raise, on the specter that Councilwoman Strausberger raised around Wilkinsburg-Penn Joint, which I think, I think I'm unique in District 9, that I have Pittsburgh Water and Wilkinsburg-Penn Joint at some point where Homewood becomes East Hills, depending on whether you live in Homewood or East Hills, some people think it's Homewood, some people call it East Hills, but, you know, right around Oakwood Street, where 15208 becomes 1522, 221, and, you know, we definitely have, you know, significant challenges, as Director Pickering knows, there's oftentimes, there's a water issue right in that area, and then I'll call Pittsburgh Water, and we find out it's actually with Wilkinsburg-Penn Joint, you know, and, 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 you know, I feel like, you know, unfortunately, you know, one of my biggest concerns with the fact that we have city residents under their auspices, that we don't have a voice, you know, we're, we're the one municipality that does not have a vote, you know, you're on that board, and it's, and it's a significantly large, you know, you know, water system, just from your perspective of, of doing this work, you know, you're, how should we, you know, be engaging, you know, with those water systems that are kind of midsize, you know, not tiny, but, but midsize, and also, if I'm not mistaken, if there's, you know, someone at the table with deeper knowledge, I mean, my understanding is that they don't fall under the PUC, is that correct? You know, I think, you know, they don't, they don't, they're not under, from what I understand, the same, you know, they don't have the same relationship with the state that Pittsburgh Water does, and I see Director Pickering nodding in the gallery, you know, so, like, just in the, in the, in the spirit of, you know, ensuring that the public, you know, has access, you know, to water, and, you know, to ensure that, you know, to protect, I think, one, to have accountability, there's, there's, there's a lot of accountability on behalf of the authority, ensure they're doing what they need to do for the, the ratepayers and, and, and those that they provide water to, but also a protection to keep those from, as the Councilwoman mentioned, them being swallowed up by, you know, you know, private corporations, you know, from, from your perspective, someone who works all over southwestern PA, I'm sure there's similar water authorities like Wilkinsburg-Penn Joint throughout the footprint of southwestern Pennsylvania, you know, what are the best ways to ensure accountability for the consumers, but then also protecting, you know, these water systems from being gobbled up by corporate entities?
I don't want to interrupt your question, but I do see that one of our speakers has their hand raised, so I don't know if members want to also kind of call on the other.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's so hard for us to remember that you're there, I apologize, Mr. Osay from.
Yeah, because Robin's like right in front of us, so, yeah, but thank you for mentioning that, Councilwoman, and that exhausts my questions, thank you.
I'll ask the Commissioner if he wants to chime in, like, Mr. Osay from, from Tom Ensign. Do you know, you have your, yes?
Yeah, sorry, I, I just wanted, there's a few comments earlier about the, the $1 price tag, and, you know, Tom Ensign's sale, our proposed sale was $104 million, that was through the state law Act 12 of 2016, which is a fair market valuable, the actual worth of our sewer system is like between $20 and $30 million, so it was overpriced, and that, just on like accounting principles, when you sell it for more money, that has to go back into the rates, so like that $1 asset charter means that the, the ratepayers aren't going to pay for the sale. So it seems to me that you all are deciding on how to restructure, potentially restructure how, how you're running your, your water system, and it's less about selling for, say, to, to pay for it, and then. The other thing with Act 12 is, every time American Water buys a system anywhere in Pennsylvania, when they file for a rate case, which they just did a few days ago, that comes back to Pittsburgh, no matter where it is, so if Tom Ensign were to sell, as we tried to, then Pittsburgh would have been paying extra rates because American Water needed to make their money back on that sale. So that's kind of one of the dangers of privatization, is you're paying for infrastructure that's not even benefiting your, your local residents.
Thank you, Commissioner, just for our kind of sense of comparison, can you, do you have off the top of your head, kind of like how many miles of sewer line, and how many people the sewer system serves? It was the sewer system that was offered for, that was evaluated, assessed at around $20 million.
Yeah, I do not have sewer lines off the top of my head, but 8,000 connections.
8,000 customers, as opposed to around, you know, there's 300,000 constituents, I'm guessing it's, it's around 170,000 households in our sewer system, 120,000, yeah, so just for a sense of scale, 100, we have, Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority has about 120,000 sewer customers, and the Tom Ensign Sewer System we're hearing has about 8,000 sewer customers. And of course, Pittsburgh Water and Sewer is 120,000 sewer customers, but also water customers, so the, most of the revenue is from water, and I've got, I think the revenue, Councilmember Strausberg, I'm not sure if you've got it off the top of my head, I'm trying to find things, it's awkward, I don't mean to be calling on the, I thought we were saving our executive director of PWSA, who's John Dustin Chambers, we're saving him for Wednesday, but it does look like we, it's over $300 million per year in revenue. Some of that is being billed directly of Alka-Sand bills as well. So, these are questions that we can ask more when we actually have the legislation in front of us. front of us. I'll ask a few questions since we have everyone here, since it was kind of an open question to the speakers about like, well, isn't PWSA just as public as city council? I say no. I don't think any of our authorities, just writ large, any authority that ever existed anywhere, to me is quasi-privatization, right? It is less public than this table. That's my position. You know, I could be argued with, I'm sure about it, but we get elected and, you know, we get stopped at the grocery store, rightly so. We go to the community meetings. You can come every single week of your life, twice a week, hear and yell at us from that microphone for three minutes each, and people do. And all of the things I just said really are not true for any of our authority boards. So I would like to kind of bring that back to one of the many things I wasn't able to write down, Ms. Lasko, from your presentation on the, I think, suggestions. There were some major bullet points, but I feel like you said more than was on this slide. And some of them were around having some legal audits, but some of them were, I think you said, there were kind of two different things about governance. And I think this, the governance is really at the crux of the matter, right? I don't think, for me, you know, any councilmembers, we don't, we don't all have the same opinion. But for me, that owning the, owning any of our assets and having direct control over them is one of our core functions, right? So the parks, the assets, you know, as well as budgeting. So I heard you say, either have like the board members of the authority elected, or of the board members on the authority board have more than be officials who are elected to other positions? Is that?
Right. You know, just making sure that like any, that you have full, you know, as much representation as possible on these boards. So it's just not anybody, so it's not representationless, that's not a word, but, you know, you have somebody, you have somewhere to, that is answering to the public, that it's not just a kind of like a big oversight board, that it's just like, I can make these best decisions, best on research or best on history. It's like, that is great, but it's, they don't have to answer to anyone except their own company. But whereas like you have elected officials on these boards that's saying like, you know, I'm in charge of making decisions for the public, and it's like, I answer to the public and the public can vote me out, should I not make the best decision for them? That just makes the highest level of transparency and like really just like great rapport with your constituents and making sure that also the best technology and practices are available.
Thank you. I think members can relate, you know, we've all, each of us probably had separate tussles with our redevelopment authority of our property owned in our district, or we wish they owned, or that they do own, and they're not, you know, we're trying to bring them to be accountable to what our citizens are asking us for and having that kind of struggle. But, you know, those pieces of property aren't integral to people's daily survival, the way water is, right? And we really learned that, the hard lesson, the first time the authority was leased out for an operate and maintain license to Veolia, which we sued, who we sued and settled with, that got rid of and terminated that lease. And so privatization doesn't always mean the outright sale of the asset. And I think we learned that in the post-agenda that Councilwoman Strausberger chaired back, again, was it 2017, 2018? If I remember correctly, it was like DBFOM, Design, Build, Finance, Operate, Maintain. And currently, like as we sit today, because we haven't sold them the system, PWSA is on an operate and maintain lease, right? But then they sublet it out to an operate and maintain lease to Veolia. And that was a debacle. We'll just leave it at that. And it's been a long ways to claw back from that. And I really do think that councilmembers played a critical role as a body and as individually in making those problems transparent, really hearing the complaints from our residents, first about billing, and then about lead levels, and then enforcing a response and kind of, you know, calling the authority to account, to rebuild and refashion itself, which it has done to a great extent. And that's its success story. But the, I am concerned that even the Honorable Charter Amendment wouldn't really protect against that scenario replaying itself. So as, you know, it doesn't prevent leasing. So I know that you don't have it in front of you, but I think that is one of the things that Food and Water Watch is familiar with. And you did help us understand that, you know, seven years ago, as a, as a kind of helpful presence at that post-agenda seven years ago as well. So, can I, questions to the commissioners who are online, or even to Ms. Kohler? Is there any experience that you have in preventing or creating municipal oversight over an authority who, and then the authority is further engaging in an operate and maintain, what I'll call, sublease? Has anyone of our colleagues experienced the basic privatization of operations from, at an authority? Mr. Eastman, Mr. Osay, have you had any experience there?
So when we put out a request for bids for privatizing our system, we did have one company propose a long-term lease. The board at the time wasn't interested in it, but one of the things in our charter is we restricted the lease time, I think, to three years, because the proposed lease was like 20 years or something. And at the very least, with a two-year lease, a two or three-year lease, we could revisit it if it didn't work out. But, because we didn't want to completely get rid of the idea, you know, maybe there is some expertise that one of these companies could provide, but we just want to make sure we can hold them accountable without going to court. Because I know like the city of Chester had a parking lease where they had to sue to get out of, and I think you described something similar in Pittsburgh. I know Chicago's having a lot of trouble with that as well.
Yes, the Chicago parking lease, is it, was the parking lease you're referring to?
Yeah.
Is a famously bad example, and those same consultants tried to sell it in Pittsburgh before they succeeded in selling it in Chicago, and we were making reference to that. And likely, none of us were here at the time, but the Pittsburgh City Council at the time rejected that leasing proposal, which would, it was identical, it was the same PricewaterhouseCoopers, I think, consultants who were pitching it in Pittsburgh. And thank you to our former colleagues and the former city council that rejected that, that proposal. I'm sorry, Mr. Eastman in Gainesville, did you have any experience? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. And I'll say that, you know, a lot of our focus has been on our electric side of all of this, but, I mean, there have been a lot of, there was an attempt in 2021 to have us buy wholesale all of our power from one of the large, Florida Power and Light, which is one of the larger electric companies in the country. And now there's discussion as well about Progress Energy and doing something similar, which we're currently looking through, you know, what opportunities do we have to enforce, you know, portions of our charter? We passed a change to our charter that was a little more specific, that said that you cannot diminish the capacity to distribute, treat, or produce any, any of, any part of the systems that included electric water, wastewater, telecommunications, and natural gas without a voter referendum. But it is, it is, I think, as Mr. Osay kind of pointed out, it's hard, you know, we, you're, in some ways, you're splitting hairs, because you do, you want to be economically efficient, right? And so you're trying to find a way, you might want to outsource certain portions of it. Certainly, there are, you know, portions of every government and every business that you would outsource. And then how do you ensure that, that it's not moving into a realm where you're starting to get into policy decisions where you are now tied into a long-term contract? Similar to, I mean, the Chicago example is the best example I can think of, and I'm glad that Pittsburgh was able to avoid that, as something that once you're tied into a long-term contract through public infrastructure, it's very, very difficult to get out of. And in finding a way to know when it moves into that, where it's going to impact other parts of your policy, I think is important. We do not have good answers for it. We are currently been working mostly on trying to take, move back into governance, but have been, you know, exploring other options as time has gone on to figure out if there's any accountability measures we could put into. You know, every state's different. Florida has, we have certain provisions of our comprehensive plan. I don't know how Pennsylvania does theirs, but ours has intergovernmental coordination and infrastructure that is, that are worth looking into, interlocal agreements, things like that, that could at least, at least bring transparency to some of these processes that may also help. But yeah, it is a difficult issue.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Kohler, were you there too? Go ahead.
This is Ellen. I'll just chime in that I would agree that, you know, in terms of transparency and board membership, you know, you may, there may be some fruitful conversations that you guys could have around how you can be better engaged, you know, as a council with operations, even if it's, even as an authority structure. In terms of our experience, I, we don't, we're not working with any community that has a long-term lease. We're playing contract operators of systems, but not with a lease on the, on the assets themselves that we've had experience with. I also wondered, this is a side note, I've got to believe you guys have already reached out to the Metropolitan Municipal Authorities Association to, you know, ask them for any examples, you know, where, for example, an authority may have a different kind of board, you know, in terms of membership requirements or transparency or anything like that. I don't know if you reached out to them for, to have any conversations with them or about these kinds of questions.
Just beginning to, yes, thank you. I've had one meeting with a roundtable, I think, that involved several municipalities and someone from the association. I don't know if other members have. So I know that this has been a bit of a disjointed conversation. I think it really just kind of helps us understand that there still are, I think, questions that we still have not even formulated for ourselves, kind of like, how does this impact? Our recourse in the future is unclear. The details of the agreements, and we'll be seeing more, I think, and have the opportunity this Wednesday in Standing Committee, when we have the actual legislation in front of us, to understand a bit more back and forth with PWSA. I think several speakers, and I've been asked, kind of what is in the agreement that councilmembers are asked to authorize? I believe that none of us have that agreement. I guess one of the things I'll be asking Wednesday is like, have PWSA board members seen the agreement? And kind of what stage is that agreement at? Again, because I, when we've had these kinds of renegotiating of our cooperation agreements, which are separate, but in addition to the lease, we've had an attempt to make sure that that's reflected in our permanent record. And so it isn't just something that's hard to track down somewhere else, and that councilmembers don't just vote to pre-authorize some agreement that we don't understand what's in it, especially for something this important. I always say, if it's like the contract with the face painter for the Art Cart Festival, you know, that's, that's a separate issue. But when we're talking about something that is significant import, one of the biggest assets that the public currently owns, that is owned by, directly by the people and their representatives here at council, I do believe that that is something that should be fully transparent, so that council and the public understand what it is we're voting on. I won't keep us here any longer today, but I will ask if anyone else has anything else that they want to make sure, that they offer, Councilwoman Coghill?
Yep, yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. I know Will is gone, but I see David still here, so I just want to go back to what I previously said. When I just got here, I thought, oh, it might not be a bad idea for privatization. And at the time, I didn't think it was a bad idea. I thought, you know, it was a lot messier than what it is today. But I'm very impressed, under the leadership of Will Pickering and what PWSA has done in the past half a dozen years with the lead line replacements and just the leadership and the, and the direction and that they're going, I couldn't be happier for, and I'm glad I let you talk me out of that, Councilwoman Grossway.
You're welcome, yes.
You chased, and she chased the would-be buyers out of town, too, by the way. So, so I just wanted to be clear on that. But I understand your concerns, and I understand other concerns that others may have with this transfer. My question is this, what, what will be the expense between if we, you know, sign this over for a dollar versus not? Do we incur an expense, or does that go to PWSA for our underground infrastructure?
Are we paying for it right now?
Yeah.
It's all off-book, onto the PWSA books. So their revenue is about 360,000, million a year, and they cover this cost directly, except where, you know, we, they say it's not their infrastructure, and then we're covering costs. And, I mean, that's a bunch longer conversation. Like, how many, how many collapsing streets do you have? You know, we just had, you know, PWSA is covering the collapsed landslide that closed down the east busway for three days, because that was the problem, you know, with cause of their leaking pipes. But, you know, how many other places were sinkholes, or, you know, our thousand miles of streets are in bad shape because of bad pipes? I don't know.
Well, that's my question. Maybe I should know this, but as it is now, do we burden that cost as a city of Pittsburgh? Or do we, does PWSA burden that cost? And that's in part of what Councilwoman Strausberger said, $100 million, whatever loan they were paying off. So does it cost, is it going to cost us less money, I guess, if anybody can? I don't know, maybe, we don't know the answer to this question.
I think that we can do that on Wednesday.
Okay, okay.
And we can have PWSA at the table.
Yeah, that's good. So we will have PWSA at the table on Wednesday.
Yes. I think that's kind of, it is probably one of the most important questions.
Right, understood. I just didn't know, is it a cost, the difference, or not? The other thing was, how many board members are on PWSA? Do you know?
It's up to nine, maybe it's even up to 11. It was seven, and there used to be two elected officials on it at all times.
Oh, no, it was just one.
But since then, it's changed. It's just one that I know of.
Okay. Because isn't that real, really where the real control lies? I mean, as far as public versus private asset, right?
I voted no on the restructuring.
Yeah. Do you know how many, who appoints the board? Is it the mayor, or is it?
Yes, and council has to approve.
Okay, so mayor appoints all board members. Okay, okay. All right, and we'll follow up on those other things.
That's great, that's great. I want to say a special thank you to our speakers. I know it was a struggle to get you all here at the same time. I appreciate it. We have all your contact information, and we got to hear a little bit about your stories and your work in your respective areas. So again, thank you all for being here. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.